Greg, I want some right answers tonight now.
Okay. I'd like to call the village board to order. Roll call please, Pat.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Melczeski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world, okay? I don't have any changes to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on open and closed minutes from August 14, 2018.
What about that Ash Blast communication? Is there a number?
That's at the bottom on number seven.
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, we're still not there yet. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Move the -- to approve the minutes on August 14, was it?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. We have no public out here. Kevin, if you want to come and say anything. But otherwise, we have staff and board. Nope. Okay. Move on. Okay, number seven, written communications and/or announcements. I just -- Rex received this letter from The Blast about how great it was from one of the citizens, and I just wanted everybody to have a copy of it, and I'll let Pat read.
Where do you want to begin? Hi Rex?
Yes, just that one.
Okay. Hi Rex, just had to write and compliment you on your playground supervisors who manned the kids' games on Saturday. It's been a long time since I spent more time by the kid games than in the beer tent, and I was so impressed with your staff and how they handled all those kids. They didn't just supervise the games, they interacted, engaged the youngsters, and made it such a pleasant experience. What an awesome bunch. Two thumbs up to you and them. Thanks for the great day. Signed Nancy Mackey.
Yep. It was a great, great event. A lot of the staff here was -- and trustees were there, and it was -- I was there four different times because we had another commitment, so -- but it was really a great event, so. Okay. Number eight, action on the consent agenda, which is a request to approve operator licenses the July 2018 general fund financials, budgeted expenditures, and department reports for August of 2018. Does anybody want anything pulled, or I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance number 08-3-18, rezoning a portion of parcel VA 177-1-3 from Community Business District B3 to Heavy Industrial District I2 located at 725 Hanson Road in the village of Ashwabane, Brown County, Wisconsin. Public hearing is open. We have no public at the public hearing.
Move to close the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is closed. 10A, action on ordinance number 08-3-18, repeating everything I just read. Mr. Gerber.
The Wisconsin Public Service Corporation did purchase a large area of property, probably 15 acres of Hanson and Homegren. What they're looking at doing there, it's a vacant site right now, what they're proposing to do is that about 337 feet of the southern portion, which actually butts up to their existing storage yard in the back, where they have all their transformers, poles, wire, that type of stuff. They're looking to expand that area. In order to do so, they'd have to change the zoning from Community Business, which it currently is now to light, or excuse me, to heavy industry. Again, it will be a gravel area, be fenced in with a security fence, is not proposed to have any bar wire on top. This did go through plan commission, was approved. It also went through site plan and was conditionally approved. What they're looking at there is they want a little more buffering with landscaping from the Homegren side, so there's a few more trees that'd be planted in there. But essentially, this is a portion of the property to be rezoned, is not the entire parcel. The portion closest, the northern portion closest to Hanson, will remain as Community Business for a long-range future planning. From a staff perspective, we did not want to see industrial brought all the way out to Hanson Road. We want to create that buffer there of some future development that's more in line with what is there right now. Even though it's a car dealership, it's still more of a commercial use, not an industrial use. So again, this is just the southern 337 feet to rezone to Heavy Industry.
We -- I just wanted to say that Public Service, when they first came in about this, they showed us a little bit of a different plan, so we worked with them and got them to agree to do this, and I think it fits their needs, but yet it still keeps that B3 zoning in the front on Hanson Road, so I think it works for all parties.
Move to approve ordinance number 08-3-18 regarding portion of parcel VA 177-1-3 from Community Business District B3 to Heavy Industry District 1-2 located at 725 Hanson Road.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 08-3-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10B, request for up to $4,000 for PAC paving. Allison.
Well, I'll take it from Allison. It's not her baby, it's mine. I asked her, I requested her to put this on. We learned a lesson last year. We have a blacktop driveway where trucks can back in to unload their show equipment on the north side of the PAC. It's got a huge door there. Excuse me. But when it was -- when that area was landscaped, unfortunately, there's a piece of it to the east that's grass, and that got all rutted and looked like the dickens, and it's going to happen again because these trucks go in there, and there's more than one truck for many of the shows, and cars and SUVs, and it's in the fall and spring, and even in the wintertime, it's just, it's a mess. So we've been looking and looking, and concrete would be very expensive. Doug and I and Kate, we've been looking to see what we could do with, to get that fixed. And even the contractor for the village, who does our concrete work, just, they're up to their eyeballs in work and they can't do it. He could do it, but he gave us a price that was pretty substantial. So we then Doug contacted a, I think it's Northeast Asphalt, for a quote on asphalt thing, and blacktopping it rather than concrete, and that quote came a little over $7,700. So I touched base with the school district, and there, they would pay half, and hopefully the village would agree to pay half. And I know this is, this is a difficult time to ask for money. We're in past the middle of the year, and we're not into, we're starting the budget process for next year, but this needs to be done at this time, so we don't run into that same ugly situation this fall again and winter. So, and we have funds left over, I'm not asking for money to be taken out of any place else that where it's needed, but we do have some small bit of funds left over that we could use to fund half of this addition, additional asphalting. So I would ask the village board to hopefully approve an amount not to exceed $4,000 for our half of the project.
Set a motion, sir?
Yeah, sure. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll make that motion that the village board approve a sum not to exceed $4,000 as our half of the project as described in item 10B.
Do we have a second?
Ken, if I could ask a question?
You gotta, I have to have a second before we discuss it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No discussion.
Ken, how much asphalt versus blacktop -- asphalt versus concrete is that going to be?
The cost, you mean?
No, no. Just appearance-wise. I mean, is it going to look right?
It's asphalt now, so asphalt will match what's there now.
Oh, it will?
Yes.
Oh, it is a match?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was concrete.
The concrete contractors are just so busy, and the gentleman, Martel, they do our con -- they do our concrete. Is it Martel?
They do some stuff.
Areas.
Whoever does it, anyway, they, we asked them to look at it, it would be over $11,000, and they just rather not do it because they're so busy. So it would be asphalted, but that would match what's the --
It will match. All right. I was just thinking of the aesthetics of it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Very good. Don't have a problem then.
The only, the only question is, I don't disagree with Ken on this, I just don't know if it's the right time to approve a project not at budget time. So that's my question.
I understand, I understand.
And that's the only thing I'm trying to figure out here. Yeah, well, numbers request for something that's not budgeted.
Well, we have excess funds. I mean, it's not going to break, break the bank by any means. We have 600 and some thousand left from 2017 and 2018. We will have excess funds, we just don't know how much that is, but that will probably be well in excess of 100,000, because we will also have the settlement funds from Flipstein again.
Philosophically, I agree with Mark. You know, we don't like to do this other than during budget time, but this is something that, and we haven't been here, why, when I say we, the Performing Arts Center, Mark and I and several other people, we work hard to get, to obtain sponsors for our shows. We've got a great lineup. You, you should be getting something soon as to what our, this season's lineup is going to be, and if you want tickets, you can already go to Ticketstar online, you'll see it there. But the printing is being done as we speak. But we haven't come to the village board for funds at all, frankly, other than, other than this particular project. So I understand what Mark's, Mark's point is, but we'd like to get this done before it gets roughed up again.
To clarify, not to argue, but to clarify, we do fund part of the director's salary, we fund part of the technical director's salary already. There were significant fundraising dollars that Ken almost single-handedly generated that went in there as well, and there's a small amount remaining to that that we have, I think we're down to like 5,000 or something like that, that was sent to the PAC so that they could do what they will with it. They have more needs, frankly, than everybody else in terms of what their, their budget shortfall was.
I, since this request came in, I've really been thinking about this. It is on school grounds, so then my first thought was, well, then the school should fund it. But then, you know, this really is a community building. The PAC is a community building. If we didn't have the excess funds, I probably, you know, would feel differently, but I guess I would like it cleaned up before the start of the snow, because otherwise, it's just going to get sloppy, messy, and next year, we're just going to pay more to have it done. You know, it's one of those things that, you know, they're busy now, well, I guarantee next year, they're going to be even busier. So as a community, a community facility, because I see the PAC, we are funding a large portion of that, you know, with, with personnel that's over there, and, and I do feel that it is a community, community facility, so.
Allison, a quick question. How many times have we gone to excess funds that we do have that we did fix something or need, needed to do things? It's not the first time we've ever asked for something that wasn't, wasn't budgeted for the year.
No, I would, I would agree. It happens.
It happens. Thank God we do have excess funds for doing projects like that that are, are not a great expense, and especially when we can divide it between the school district and the village.
I just want to make sure we don't, we're not doing this all the time, I guess, either, you know, for other projects, unless we're going to circumvent the budget process, basically is what we're doing. Everything's got a need, you know, which I, I don't disagree about this need, it's just the timing of it.
I would be more concerned if it was the beginning of the year, the first six months, because we don't really know where we are hitting, or where our targets are and whatnot. You know, at this point, summer is over, you know, we know how that, that went. We know it was a warm summer, and we know we did well at the lake and that kind of thing.
It's not going to, not going to snow this year.
You know what our excess is. We know we're having excess as opposed to, that's tight. It's not, it's not going to break the bank by any means if it was something lower priority and you had more time to deal with it. Perhaps, you know, there are other issues internally that we're like, well, we'll just deal with that and resolve it in the larger budget picture. But this in and of itself, it's something they've been talking about already for a year now.
I understand your point, Mark, but incidentals happen, and we're fortunate enough to have excess cash.
Even Greg's agree, don't, don't you, Greg? Greg, do you?
It's a non-committal.
You think I was going to hit you, didn't you?
It's a non-committal purpose, yes.
No, I'm only, I'm only teasing, it's not, that's not a fair comment.
I'll call a question.
Okay, so the, the motion is to approve the $4,000 funding for the asphalt at the PAC not to exceed $4,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, 10C, request, request to contract with an outside party for additional inspection services. Allison.
So I think you're all aware that Todd has resigned and is leaving with us effective next Wednesday. He'll work Tuesdays, his last day. Prior to this event, though, we were already talking about, we are so busy here in terms of inspections and activities that we're having a hard time keeping up. Todd's position is about 90% or so paperwork in terms of building permits, plans, site plans, that type of thing. He does spend some time doing inspections outdoors, but throughout the course of the year. Todd is the only one on staff that can do commercial electrical inspections. Eric, who is back here in the teal, in case you haven't met him, that's Eric Baumann, and he can do everything else. Eric is a plumber by trade, but really spends almost all of his day out and about in the world inspecting things. As a result, with, just with the volume in terms of apartments, hotels are probably the most intensive in terms of the amount of time it takes you to go through each individual apartment or unit. Volume-wise, we're just exceeding our capacity, and so we had already been talking about trying to contract with somebody for some additional help. With Todd leaving, that makes that need even greater for the short term. We need, Eric can pick up the paperwork slack as well as Aaron, but we need Eric physically in the building to do those things, and he can't be out doing inspections and physically in the building to accomplish that. So that pushes that need even more so. There are not a lot of people in the world that are licensed and capable to kind of hit that ground running. We've identified one person that would be able to take us on and help us. That hourly rate would be $80 an hour. So that's the best I can kind of find. I've already reached out to adjoining municipalities to see if they have capacity to help us, and they do not. And everybody else is kind of piecemealing it in. There's not, I guess, not a lot of good options for us overall. So at this point, we are already trying to hire for Todd's position that is posted. What I would like to do is enter into a contract with a third party to provide contract services, and we would just use them as we need them. You know, it just depends on, we're going to try and set a schedule for Eric to, to be in-house in his desk, and as inspections come up, if they're in those, exceed that amount of time where Eric's threshold is in terms of where he needs to be in the office, anything beyond that would have to go to the third party. And then we'll kind of resort things out once we bring another person on. Inspection world is a little complicated in terms of Todd is one of, what, 51 people in the state of Wisconsin that are licensed in the, I want to say the old way, if you will, in terms of he can do commercial plumbing, commercial electric, plus all the other building divisions. Eric, as lovely as he is, no matter what we do with him, can never get the commercial electrical, because he would have to do, become a journeyman electrician in order to get to that side. So probably not going to happen in Eric's lifetime. So, so we're going to have to have some flexibility just going into the future, just because it's hard to find somebody that's got those qualifications, and we're also trying to bridge this paper pushing portion, building plan reviews and building codes and whatnot with the inspection portion. So it really depends on what we get long-term, but either way, short-term, we probably need maybe 20 hours a week. Long-term, that might go back down to 10 hours, but it also depends on how much more construction we have going.
Well, I think, I think we ought not shortchange ourselves in the, we've got a lot of things going on in this village, and we can't afford to have roofs collapsing and walls collapsing and things because we didn't have the appropriate inspections done. So I, I just, I think you ought to do what you need to do, and don't sell, don't sell the village short, because if things, things go haywire because we didn't want to spend an extra 80, or 160, or 240 dollars for an inspection, we pay a much bigger price in the end. So I'm, I'm all for this. We have, we have to do it. I just don't see a, I don't see an alternative.
Hopefully, budget-wise, we'll have a better idea as we go forward a little bit. It's hard to, to sort out budget-wise. We are, we increased our permit revenue last year for the budget, anticipating the construction that we knew was on the horizon, that's happened. We will hit or exceed that number, and we're almost to hitting it right now, but at the same time, we aggressively escalated, we did not really factor in any additional expense. So we thought we could kind of ride it out, unfortunately. Now we've peaked out and now realize we need to tie in some expense with that, so.
Allison, I don't have a problem on what you're telling me, or us, I should say. Our staff does a good job at their inspections regardless of what their positions are. My question is, having a third party, are they going to be as responsible as our own people are in doing these inspections? Because we've, I'm not aware of any problems that we had, and I sure don't want to see any problems coming up.
No, I mean, well, they will still have to report back to us in terms of, we need to keep track of the inspections, so that information will still come back to us. I think it's something we still need to supervise and say, these are our expectations, this is the turnaround time we expect, this is how we expect our residents and property owners and contractors and developers to be treated, and there's a high standard with that. But that's a conversation in a bar we need to set and continue to monitor.
I think this is only until we hire someone, though, Gary, right?
Well, it's just that they would go down. We need somebody no matter what.
Oh, okay.
We need some amount of hours, it's just that sometimes it's a lot, sometimes it's down, it's a little bit cyclical.
This is even after Todd is replaced?
Yes, we already had started this discussion before Todd resigned.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay, I guess, I just, I just don't want to see our quality of inspections go away with a third party saying, ah, leave that alone, leave that, we're all right, well, it'll, it'll work. But, you know, our, our team here really makes sure it's done according to the specifications that their degree is in when they do inspections regarding how the state demands certain things, and I want to make sure that continues.
And I think we have that issue whether we hire somebody or don't. I think the tricky part is now, we can piece it in with somebody who's an independent contractor and doing it for multiple, multiple municipalities, as opposed to trying to go out there. We're going to struggle to fill Todd's position, but to try and hire somebody for 10 hours a week every week, or 20 hours, we're going to have a harder time trying to find that type of body to fill, fit that in.
See what you're doing to us? I mean, do you see that? Good luck, whatever happened.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the village manager to enter into a contract for third-party inspection services on hourly rate basis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize village manager to enter into a contract for third-party inspection services on an hourly basis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. D, discussion and possible action on NRDA grant.
So on this, we were awarded a grant to do fish cribs and other things along the waterfront in, kind of from Mansell Flats into the area of Ashwabane. Part of that is to drop the fresh cribs into the water and set those up. Initially, when we worked with StanTech to put the grant together, they budgeted about $200,000 for it. Now, in terms of the available contractors who can do it, and what they submitted bids for has doubled, so therefore, we would just ask that we reject the bid, and then we're going to regroup at a later time.
Wow.
Okay, so we need a motion to reject the bids.
Go move.
Second.
Motion and a second to reject the bids. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
You know, just, just a comment, just, just a quick comment. I think we saw earlier on, on the work we needed to do at the PAC, and now this, you know, we are really running short of people in the trades, young people in the trades. I don't care what trade it is, plumbing, carpentry, welding, and we just have to make, start making, well, we have. I know the high school has, has made some progress, nice progress in this regard over the last couple of years. I know when you were involved, Mark, that those things would happen, but boy, I tell you what, we, we just need, we need to impress on people that not everyone needs to go to college. College is great, nothing wrong with a college education, but boy, we need to get people in these trades. You go to, you go to get a bid on something, and they say, well, we're up to our eyeballs, we can't even bid on a project. So I don't know where this is going, but I think this country, this country as a whole has a real, real problem and issue in trying to find people to go, go to technical schools and develop trade skills, so God bless, just a comment.
Ken, that's what happens when they went to, when the computer was invented, everybody wanted it to get into that, and then they forgot about the trades.
Yeah.
And, and everybody sat home playing with their thumbs rather than tools.
Yeah.
And now we are in that position that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Thank God the schools are turning it around now, bringing the trades back.
And if you think the tech trades aren't on par with college education, sit down and talk to a plumber someday about the options for onsite septic systems and the options, the dozens of options that are available, including in-ground pressure, all sorts of things. It's, these people are super educated. Basically, they're engineers.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for listening.
Okay. 10E, possible discussion and action on ordinance 08-2-18, amending municipal code section 9-1-1 and resolution R 8-1-18, updating village bond schedule. Mr. Wachowitz.
Okay, this agenda item has a couple of different purposes. First, it's to kind of arrange the municipal code with respect to possession of marijuana. We had a local ordinance regarding possession of marijuana. There's also a state law that talks about the possession of a controlled substance. Creates some confusion for the officers when they're out writing citations as far as looking at our local ordinance as opposed to our standard section of 9-1-1 that adopts state law. So what this does is essentially deletes our local ordinance on possession of marijuana, adopts a state law, and then expands the ability for us to issue those citations for any controlled substances instead of just marijuana. So there's that. There's also moving some alcohol-related violations out of 9-1-1 into chapter three for a more appropriate placement. And then the second part of this agenda item then is to change or update the bond schedule to reflect those changes and do some other additions and clean up for correct citations.
Move to approve ordinance number 08-2-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance zero eight dash two dash eighteen.
As well as the resolution.
As res-
And to include the resolution.
Chris, that, your second includes-
Second, yep.
Okay, the second includes the resolution also, so it's ordinance zero eight dash two dash eighteen and resolution R eight dash one dash eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, F, possible discussion and action on ordinance eight dash one dash eighteen, repealing dog and cat licensing, number of dogs and cats limited, and resolution R eight dash two dash eighteen, approving fee schedule.
Okay, this proposed ordinance initiated or started first with some discussion on cleaning up the language a little bit. There was confusion as far as how to calculate the total number of dogs and cats that are allowed. So, with that, the proposed amended language here clears that up so that there's, you can only have a total of, of two, or any combinations of two dogs or two cats, or one and one of each. So, the proposed ordinance addresses that. Then, as a result of those discussions, we had additional discussion concerning whether we need to keep licensing for dogs and cats in the village. Essentially, public safety doesn't really get involved with respect to the licensing. It, it's kind of an additional piece that we really don't need from a public safety perspective. We have other ordinances that we can enforce, such as making sure that they have rabies vaccinations. If the animals are running at large, we can issue citations for that. So, with that and the minimal amount of revenue that comes in with respect to licensing, the proposal is to essentially delete the licensing, it's, it's no longer necessary.
I did, I did get a call today from a lady. She stated that she was against getting rid of the dog and cat licensing. I told her that we really don't, our, our animal control officer, when they go to a home, they don't have this information at their fingertip to know whether or not these animals are licensed. The people typically can't find the little tag that we give them. Then, it came up today about what happens when they need to have a tag from the county if they want to go to the dog park. So, we resolved that. They can just send in their rabies, proof of rabies vaccination to the county, and the county will issue them the tag so they don't have to go down there. So, it, it, this is just, for us, it's just a matter of paperwork, and it's, and it's a lot of paperwork, and, and we don't use the data. If it was something that was, you know, we needed to, to have this, ninety percent of the people don't even license their dogs and cats. Even though every municipality has it, they don't typically license their dogs and cats. And then, somebody else called me about, they didn't think we should get rid of having two dogs and two cats, and I said, for years now, we have enforced that it is two total. So, the language was just clearing up what they've been enforcing.
So, what do they, what do you, if, if somebody has a cat and two dogs, or a dog and two cats?
They're not supposed to have that, they're supposed to have a total of two.
So, how do we know that?
They aren't licensed, so you wouldn't.
You're right.
So.
Currently, if they have that, they already weren't supposed to have that, that didn't change by virtue of the ordinance, that's the way it always was supposed to be. The only way we get notified is they have some sort of animal issue and the neighbors complain or something like that. So, the CSO goes out there and then counts the animals and says, you can't have that, and you either need to find a way to get rid of one, they may end up with a citation, something like that. That's usually how the process goes.
Okay, so, Chris, we just had this discussion at Park Board as far as when we talked about having, possibly developing a park, or a dog park.
Uh huh.
And it was getting going on and on and on, and it's like, I didn't think, you know, they said they needed a license if we do have a dog park. So, it's like, now we're going, I mean, it's like, we had the discussion a month ago, and now it's all coming back around.
Called Brown County because of that, and Brown County just needs to validate if the person, if the person, the person's dog has their rabies shot. So, if they give them, they should still have a tag from their vet that that has occurred, and most people have that tag on their dog with that number, so that's really what's important. We, Brown County said, if you, if you don't license it, that's just the shortcut way of getting that data and knowing that it's there, but otherwise, they, they just want to know that they're vaccinated.
So, the county parks, the county dog parks that are out there use the tag that county-
Person has to separately get a county permit for twenty dollars to go to the, the county dog park, or they can get a daily pass, but they have to basically validate that their animal has been vaccinated. So, they either rely on the municipalities, or in the case that they don't have that, they would ask the person to provide proof from the vet, which, that's on the dog tag from the vet is the vaccination number.
Okay. So, no matter what, they would need, the, the dog would need some kind of a tag.
Right, well, they're, they're getting one from the vet.
What's that?
Right, they're getting one from their vet.
Which I think-
They happen to get another one from us if they come here to do that.
Right. In the, I think that, that would clear, I don't know, an issue with that, you know, if it ever would come, you know, a discussion for that, something like that for a dog park.
We maybe have, like, based on revenues, I think I calculated, we have maybe like three hundred dogs, cats that are registered, so I'm guessing there's way more than that in the village.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's in evidence of how much compliance there is in the world.
Is there any reason why we would want them to be registered? I guess-
Because we always have.
That's not, that's not a good excuse, I guess. I mean, if there, I mean, we have a building permit that we have to get too, but it's like-
But, we go out and validate that you've built and done something in compliance. That's the problem we found with the dog and cats is, A, the data's not available, we have a technology gap, let's say, in terms of the CSO is out in the world, she can't just quickly access it. And two, it's so frequent that the people don't have a license, the data's not going to be in there anyway. And then, three, if we have an actual dog bite or something like that, frankly, we don't, we don't validate for real in terms of what some, you know, somebody fills out the form and says their dog is vaccinated. That didn't mean they brought in a form, they showed us something else from their vet. So, what she does in the case of a dog bite is actually verify with their vet that that shot was given. We need to tie up that loose end, and we, and we do a good job at that when that happens. But, the, the dog licensing portion of it is not executing that.
That's, that's fine. I mean, if we don't have any reason for licensing them, why regulate?
Right.
I agree.
Well, why license them? Regulate them in terms of how many and all that kind of stuff, but, right, yeah, that's why we said let's just-
Move to approve ordinance eight dash one dash eighteen. And resolution.
Mr. Wachowski, can I get two cents?
Well, let's, well, I get a motion, then you can, all right?
This is our second. Then you can have discussion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance eight dash one dash eighteen and resolution R eight dash two dash eighteen.
I'll second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Okay, discussion.
You know, I don't have a problem with one dog, one cat, two dogs, two, or two cats, I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is licensing. We are getting to the point of we are having more dogs than children. And I'm not saying we should, you know, that's just the way society is today.
You're not licensing, wanting to license children.
The way society is today. In our neighborhood alone, we have young couples coming in, and I think they all have dogs, and I know we already have a problem within the neighborhood about neighbors and their dogs. I, I have to think that by licensing them, at least we know where some of these dogs are and, or cats, it don't make a difference, and that they at least should be responsible for their animals, and we know that they have an animal or two. So, I, I'm not going to agree that we should drop the ordinance of not having them permitted.
Well, the only, the only problem with that, though, Gary, is I'll bet if you walk up and down your street and you ask the people, do you have your dog licensed? I would venture to say that ninety percent of them don't.
I'm sure they don't.
Right.
I agree.
Right, so, we have this-
Are we publicizing it to say we, you need one?
Well, there, it's right on our website that you have to have a dog or cat license.
Everybody reads the website every night.
We have bike licenses yet, too. We have bike licenses yet.
We, I think we do.
Yes.
Don't know how many of those we have either. That actually is helpful with stolen bikes, though, if they have a bike license, it can help you identify that bike.
If we don't have dog licenses, we don't need bike licenses either, because I haven't seen one in years.
But, the, the dog license doesn't help us really with lost dogs. The dogs have the chip, and we use a reader for that, we don't go based on the, like that. At least with a bike license, it helps us find who the owner of the bike is.
Is it a little, is it a little, is it a little tag that's put on the bike? And we used to have, you know, like that, the metal.
It's different.
Mary, I'm a little older than you, don't laugh, so.
I got a bike from DePuria nineteen seventy-four. I used it for lawn art.
Oh, my God. So, it's a little thing you put on a fender, like?
Ken, you and I remember that.
Okay, so, are we going, what are we going to do with this? I mean, I'm okay with it, I guess, right now.
If we were to do any type of enforcement, it would really have to be like, start going out there door-to-door and start doing it, and you'd have to increase your fee just to make it worth your while, and then we're still not really doing anything with the data.
I call a question.
Ooh, there you go.
Okay.
Robert's rule.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, to adopt ordinance eight dash one dash eighteen, repealing dog and cat licensing, number of dogs and cats limited, and resolution R eight dash two dash eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Okay, motion carried.
I want to follow up with a comment. We had a dog get loose last week, and thanks to a friendly neighbor and a community service officer, it was found before I even knew about it, and we retrieved it without incident. So, whoever was the community service officer that day got it, it was Australian Red Heeler, that's more like the Tasmanian Devil than a, than a, than a herding dog.
Well, that's good. Okay, number nine, possible discussion and act, I mean, G, nine, G, possible discussion and action on resolution R eight dash three dash eighteen, to recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I would, I would like Pat to read the resolution in light of everything that's been, that's happened in our community lately. I would like him to read that resolution, and then we'll possibly have a vote on it.
Resolution to recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community, the simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm, and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas, according to the CDC, each year, more than forty-one thousand people die by suicide, and whereas suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and the second-leading cause of death among people aged ten to twenty-four, and whereas the village of Ashwabena in Brown County, Wisconsin, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another, and whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo, a topic to speak on, and whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life's struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we all, we are all silently fighting our own battles, and whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village does hereby proclaim the month of September of 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the village of Ashwabena.
The, the one fact that I, I really stood out in this whereas statement here, in this resolution, was the kids between the age of ten and twenty-four. That's pretty vulnerable age, so, anyway. So, if you'd like to adopt that, we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution R eight dash three dash eighteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R eight dash three dash eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number eleven, items for next agenda. If you have any, call the office.
Just, I don't, and just a quick, quick comment. Several, last week, the optimists of this community put on a, a get-together for our public safety department at the, at the community center, and they had some burgers and brats and things to drink and things for kids to do, and I, I wasn't there, I couldn't make it, but I hear it was a great success. So, I just want to thank our, our optimist club for putting that together and sponsoring that, and a lot of local businesses, I think some people sitting at this table contributed to that, so that was well-done.
Ken, what was that I didn't catch you for?
It, it was a thank you to our public safety department, put on by the optimists at the community center last week.
At last week?
Yep, and I, and you know what? I think that's great. I would like to see that, and I'm going to try and talk to them about doing that for our, our public works department as well. Those, those fellows deserve a pat on the back as well, in my opinion, but it was nicely done for the public safety.
Question, question on public safety again. U.S. Bank opened up their new office. Our big ladder truck was there along with some officers, and any, and I went by there so fast, I didn't stop, but does anybody have an idea on what that was about?
That was the day, the day before, or the morning of the-
It was the morning.
It was the morning of, and they had an event for children. It was for children, and that's why they brought the, the fire truck there, and they had-
Did U.S. Bank sponsor that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. For children, what, for, for what, for children?
Just their grand opening.
Just to, for, because of the grand opening, yeah, yeah, get people there.
All right, very good.
Okay. Anything else?
No closed session?
Nope, nope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned.